Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the Lee County Board of Education meeting tonight. I want to start by also having a moment of silence and then we'll keep our meeting going. I also want us to remember the family of one of our former board members who passed away last week, Frank Thompson, with a moment of silence too. Amen. At this time, we'll say our pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to be back in business today. Our first order of business will be letting all of us know that today is the National Teacher Appreciation Day and it's National Teacher Appreciation Week 2. So when you see a teacher tell them thank you for what they do for our children, they put up with a lot of stuff and but they're still doing the work, not because of the money that they have been paid. So we appreciate everything that they do for all of our children, whether big or small, they are always there. So we want to say thank you to all of our teachers and administrators for what they have been doing all these years and for their dedicated service, in spite of a small salary, they're still doing it. So thank you, teachers, if you can hear me, if you're in this hall, and I hope you know that we appreciate what you're doing. Without your services, there would not be school board. So it's because you are here, that's why we have a school board and everything. Thank you. At this time, we will follow, we have some few names on the public comment. We have Lisa Reagan, if you'll come forward and talk to us. You have three minutes, please.
I'm here primarily to offer a solution rather than a problem, referencing Policy Code 1100, governing principles. I suggest, in addition to current training procedures for school employees, which will allow you elected officials the opportunity to establish policy to be modeled after by every county in our state. This will provide you the opportunity to be a beacon of light for wisdom and a firestarter for our nation's melting pot to gain consistency. Lack of wisdom spreads confusion. A change from optional continuing education to include annual mandatory training uses using the teacher workday for an onsite signature required in class with a board-approved live attorney opposing individual online computer testing for First Amendment training regarding its exercise of applications within both the employee and student lanes and where they interrelate. This change will ensure school personnel for their professional development of gaining skills and knowledge needed, especially relating to improving student performance in a safe, orderly environment. My next point references two existing policies. Here's what happened to my family. I've been told by folks in leadership positions of the school and community that First Amendment rights violations in schools isn't really a problem, and I just don't believe that's true. My daughter's First Amendment rights were violated this school year in this school system due to a lack of knowledge from her 13-year tenure teacher and assistant principal with 12 years serving our schools. After I satisfied them both with an understanding of the current laws, I was resolved to show my God's grace, the same God our country's constitution is founded on, to the teacher, assistant, principal, and the school system by not filing grievance, but be satisfied with an apology to my daughter. Now, just a few months later, students have banded together to unlawfully exercise their First Amendment rights by disrupting class time across the nation while many students were coerced by school employees to exit schools. I'm still waiting on the consequences concerning this event, which potentially sets precedence concerning the exercise of First Amendment rights in schools. Pam Sutton asked questions of this board last month with these concerns and still has not received a response to her nor the public. It is my belief that responses are expected. Also, referencing Policy Code 1310, parental involvement, as a single mama took time off work in effort to find out what are the training requirements concerning the First Amendment in our schools and to make appointment with the superintendent. I sat in the Heinz Education Building for one hour. John Conway could not tell me how to make a request for public information and failed to follow up on his promise to call me the next day with that information. Also, I was denied to make an appointment with the superintendent, Andy Bryan, which is inconsistent with Policy 1740, student-parent grievance procedure. His secretary approached me in the lobby with a pen and scrap paper. She wrote my name and phone number and asked what did I want to meet about. For my efforts, I received nothing more than two separate "I'll get back with you" statements, both I'm still waiting on. I'm seeking positive resolution for my concerns, and after being denied an appointment with the superintendent, I am considering other available options for my daughter's education. In closing, I share a story from the other day of a local church lady who told me that we here in Lee County are blessed because many roles of authority in our school system are Christian-filled.
Ms. Reagan, time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Pam Sutton.
Good evening. My name is Pam Sutton. I live at 2002 North Shoreline Drive here in Sanford, North Carolina. On April 28th, on the morning of April 28th, the Sanford Block Party was held, and it was a really tremendously wonderful community event. I thoroughly enjoyed the time I spent working there with members of the WP Wicker community. I was able to speak with and interact with several community members and found them to be very lovely, kind, and hardworking people. From the newspaper, I understand that that event was held with the intent of giving and providing support in beautifying the area in anticipation of the opening of the WB Wicker Elementary School in the fall of 2019. One thing that I did wonder as I was there working, I did wonder, as my own personal observation, I did not see any members of the county commissioners or the Board of Education that approved the opening of that school, and I did have to wonder why none of them were there. And I think that just based on my interaction with members of that community, they would have probably appreciated the time and effort to be there to physically show support for their community in anticipation of the opening of WB Wicker Elementary School. Thank you for your time and your attention this evening.
That ends our public comment time. At this time, we'll have a board member read to us the Lee County Vision and Policy 2120, Code of Ethics for the Members. Yes?
The vision statement for Lee County Schools. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120. The Board recognized that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should: Avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board; Avoid the solicitation and acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board; Avoid the misuse of public funds; Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts; And avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you. At this time, I want to recognize the, some of our special guests, you all are our special guest, and we have the press call here. We have Mr. Horner and Mr. Grant, thank you for coming, and we have the representative of, for brag, Ms. Lavia, Lori Slavia, thank you all for coming, and all of you here are very special. I might not know you by name, I might know you, but we can recognize every one of you, but we want to say thank you for coming here tonight. At this time, I would like to turn to my board members for the approval of the agenda for 5/8/2018.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve the agenda for May 8, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. The next thing we have is approval of the minutes of 410 and 423.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes for 410, 2018, and 423, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. At this time, we have the chairman's report. I have so much going on, I look at my calendar this month, and I saw everything is filled up with one activity or the other, and I was even thinking of quitting my day job so that I can have time, but for the fact that this job doesn't pay much, so I can't quit my day job, because my wife still need the money, and I have a daughter in medical school, so I couldn't do that. So at this time, I want to let, I want to say a few things about what we're doing. Our board, former board member that passed away this last week, we sent flowers to our board, to former board members who is bereaved, so we send a flower. We didn't send a flower, they didn't want a flower from anyone, they want us to give a gift to the, to the charity of their choice, so we send them a hundred dollar gift for the charity of their, of their choice. At the same time, we have also the, the School Board Association. The School Board Association wants us to have a committee member that will be serving on the Legislative Committee, so I will work on getting one of our board members to represent us with the School Board Association in Raleigh, who will be going to advocate for, for our board at the Legislative House. The other thing I want to say to us is, is to thank every one of you for being here and for everything that you're doing for us as, as a supporter, as a parent. We hear all of you, and we're working hard to make sure that our school system is the best in the state. Thank you for coming. At this time, I want to hear from the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time, I'd like to ask Dr. Johnny Waller to come forward for Clean School of the Month.
Lee County Schools is committed to providing a safe and caring environment for all of our students. One of the major signs of that is that we make sure that we have a clean school for every child and every staff member, and that's evidenced by the fact that this past, in April, all 16 of our schools scored 90 or above on the custodial reports, which is outstanding, and our winner for last month in the Clean School Award is Floyd L. Knight with a score of 99. Fantastic.
Thank you all for the acknowledgement. The entire group of staff members, we worked tirelessly to make sure that the school was ready for the students to come and learn, and our custodians, Mr. Eddy and Ms. Arlene, go above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that everything is in its place. And I also, Chris is not here, so he will miss his shout-out. I also would like to thank the maintenance department, because they work hard to keep us all afloat, and again, thank you all, it truly is a team effort.
Yes. Thank you, board members, for this, this award. You know, we work really hard with the support of our staff and Jennifer, of course, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Sometime when you go and visit our schools, you'll be thinking, did anyone step on these floors because it's shining and everything, and you'll be thinking, how did they get this done? So we want to say thank you to you.
Mr. Chairman, final part of my report tonight, accountability report. We are in the home stretch for testing and a lot of work being done with our teachers and students and prep for EOGs and EOCs.
Okay, that's, thank you, and we keep praying for you guys as we go through that. The next thing we have on our agenda is the, the committee reports. We'll go to CNI.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The High School Curriculum and Instructions Committee met on April the 11th, 2018, at Southern Lee High School. Superintendent Andy Bryan informed us that the contract for the contractor for Deputy Wicker Elementary School was approved by the Board of Education, as was the finance agreement with the county. Board Member Patrick Kelly presented his proposal to add 10 minutes to the instructional school day beginning in August of 2018. This would allow us to bank time into our school calendar in the event of inclement weather. If the bank time is not used, teacher workdays would be observed sometimes during second semest, second semester. The multi-tier system support report, a support report was given by AIG Director Gail Smith. Currently, the program is being piloted at Lee County High School, East Lee Middle School, and Deep River Elementary School. Southern Lee's Best Practice Report was presented by Ms. Molly Poston on Teachers' Observing Teachers' Team Learning Walk Through Program. The Middle School Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting was held at Bradstreet Academy on April the 28th at 3:30. Superintendent Andy Bryan informed the committee that there would be a groundbreaking ceremony for the new WB Wicker Elementary School. Also, Board Member Patrick Kelly continued his dialogue about adding 10 minutes to the instructional day beginning in August of 2018. Bradstreet Academy teacher Dara Frederick presented her Best Practice Report on Success Using Stations. This presentation explained that no matter the size of the class or its ability, learners, stations can be beneficial in gaining and keeping control of your classroom by providing choices of assignments. Additional reports were given by directors and lead teachers. The next CNI committee meeting will be held at Greenwood Elementary School on Wednesday, May 8th, May 9th, 2018. Mr. Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we want to hear from Facility and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Facilities and Technology Committee met on April 24th. The first action item on our agenda concerned lottery applications. It's estimated we'll receive in the neighborhood of a million dollars this year from the North Carolina Lottery. It was a consensus of the committee to approve the East Lee Middle School lottery application in the amount of $420,000, and the Wesley Middle School lottery application in the amount of $420,000, which obviously is going to take up most of that funding. And of course, that funding is coming from the lottery. This is on your consent agenda. In case you missed it, Chris McGill had, had the surplus sale at the maintenance facility, and that's an exciting activity for everybody to attend. They did raise $13,749 and got, moved some stuff that we no longer have need of, and the superintendent also reminded the committee of a groundbreaking ceremony for WB Wicker School, which will be, well, he didn't have a date at that point, so we now know it's May the 17th.
May 17th, yeah.
And the next meeting, Mr. Chairman, is Tuesday, May 22nd.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to Finance.
And fortunately, we had a pretty short meeting in Finance on April the 24th. The first action item, Kelly Jones presented information on our pay dates. The pay dates were approved, and that's on your consent agenda. And Amanda Kegel, who is new to us, who is our new Child Nutrition Director, presented her new plan. The plan was last updated in 2011, and the format and content was recommended by DPI. Mr. Love and Kelly Jones both reviewed the document and made their recommendation to the committee to approve as presented. This item is also on your consent agenda. Mrs. Jones also shared board expense with the committee, and that also, that is contained in your FYI of your agenda. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to Policy.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm going to defer to Ms. Womack, because I was not able to attend the policy meeting last week, and she chaired it in my stead, but if I could prior to that, I want to take a point of personal privilege with it being Teacher Appreciation Week. I had the opportunity to attend the Carolins Festival of Music last weekend with the East Lee Middle School Full Orchestra, and seeing these teachers that sometimes are the unsung heroes, because there is no EOG in band or orchestra, and so they are our supplemental instruction teachers, but to see what these arts programs are doing for the confidence of these students, and to watch them perform so wonderfully in front of a very tough panel of judges, and they were able to come home with a plaque of excellence. And for little bitty Lee County and little bitty East Lee Middle School, I thought that was a really big boon, and Wesley Middle School's chorus also got a plaque of excellence. So sometimes we need to look outside of the maths and the sciences and see some of the really good things that are going on in our schools, and our music programs are certainly one of them. So just that point of personal privilege and to say we really do appreciate all of our teachers, not just our, our academic subjects, but also our fine arts. Now, Ms. Womack, if you would, I apologize.
First, I'd like to publicly thank our current Lee County Board of Education Chair, Mr. Akonosha, for attending our committees during our chair's absence. I definitely appreciate the advanced coordination and research by John Conway, Dr. Johnny Waller, Kelly Jones, Amanda Kegel, Attorney Jimmy Love, Sharon Spence, and Dr. Bryan. They carefully reviewed each one of the suggestions from the North Carolina School Board Association and continue ensuring our policies remain in accordance with the federal and state mandates. Each policy that we go over actually has the potential of requiring hours of research without each one of those members coordinating together, so, and having, of course, Melinda Tillman there to keep it straight. So during our policy meeting, we had, we, three of the policies, we moved to the next meeting, because our chair was not with us at that time, who had additional insight for that. That left us with 30 remaining policies pending approval during the first reading for the board tonight. Of those 30 policies, seven required only minor corrections, such as updates to legal references where needed, and alignment of titles to the sample policies of the North Carolina School Board Association. Of those remaining 23 policies, were discussed in detail with the committee to ensure all the policies remain in accordance to the federal and state mandates, in addition to carefully reviewing suggestions from the North Carolina School Board Association. So the committee would like to recommend the following policies for first review. Policy 7010, 4021, 7230. Policy 1720, 4015, 7225. Policy 3200. Policy 3565, 8307. Policy 4316. Policy 4301. Policy 4328. Policy 4400. Policy 5010. 5070. 7350. 6220. 6420. 6421. 2100. 20, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, 7240. 7410. 8220. 8300. 8325. 8510. And 9125. We also recommended the repeal of Policy Number 9135, as is no longer needed. And our next board meeting is the 15th of May.
Okay.
Now, you want the bad news, you're gonna have to read all those again in a few minutes.
What I just said.
At this, at this time, I would need a vote for the consent agenda for approval of the consent.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. So at this time, we go to the board policies, so Ms. Womack.
Yes, I love you too.
You want me to do it this time, so you can catch your breath?
Okay, can I do that instead? Okay. That's, you're not to the information. This is your part. Okay, Lee County Board of Education Policy Committee recommends the following policies for approval on first reading. Policy 1700, governing principle removal of barriers. Policy 3640, 5130, student voter registration and preregistration. Policy 4700, student records. Policy 5030, community use of facilities. Policy 5071, 7351, electro-call stored information retention. Policy 6442, vendor list. Policy 9120, bidding for construction work.
Coming from committee, it will not need a second.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, is it all?
At this time, we go to number two.
Do you need to take a vote? Do you need to take a vote on that?
Yes, yes, okay. I was going to do the two together. We need a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Okay. The Lee County Board of Education Policy Committee recommends the following policies for first reading. Policy 1710, 4021, 7230, prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and bullying. Policy 1720, 4015, 7225, discrimination, harassment, and bullying complaint procedure. Policy 3200, selection of instructional material. Policy 3565, 8307, Title I program comparability of services. Policy 4316, student dress code. Policy 4301, student dress and appearance. Policy 4328, gang-related activity. Policy 4400, attendance. Policy 5010, parent organizations. Policy 5070, 7350, public records, retention, release, and disposition. Policy 6220, operation of school nutritional services. Policy 6420, contracts with the board. Policy 6421, pre-audit and disbursement certifications. Policy 7100, recruitment and selection of personnel. Policy 7240, drug-free and alcohol-free workplace. Policy 7410, teacher contracts. Policy 8220, gifts and baskets. Policy 8300, physical management standards. Policy 8325, daily deposits. Policy 8510, school finance office officer. Policy 9125, participation by minorities business, and the repeal of Policy 9135, construction change orders repeal.
Thank you. We, we need a motion for that.
That was from committee.
It's from committee too, okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. At this time, we'll look at the current expenses and capital outlay by Dr. Bryan.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have a copy of the current expense and capital outlay request and budget book. We've been working on for the last several months, going all the way actually back to November, and it's what you've discussed at our last meeting, and in detail for you And just so everybody knows, this has come through requests from the teachers, school improvement teams, principals, directors, administrators, and then through the board process with work sessions and public hearings to the board table.
Mr. Chair, first I'd like to say thank you to our central office and all of our people that have been helping central office and take care of this budget request and put this together for us, and with that, I make a motion that we approve the current expense and capital outlay request as presented.
We need a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion is approved unanimously. So at this time, we need a, a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, and not a public record on the North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318, 1181.
Second. Thank you. We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We remain in closed session. Board of Education, back from a closed session, we need a, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we re-enter open session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We're back in open session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve the administrator contracts as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve the first-year, one-year contracts as presented in closed session.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve the multi-year contracts as presented in closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the HR report as presented in closed session.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we table the release of the 2014 to-date closed session minutes pending further scrubbing by the school board attorney.
Second.
I have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Did we get everything?
That's five.
Yeah, we got it. We need a motion for adjournment of.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn for this evening.
Second.
I have a motion, we have a second, the motion is, the meeting is adjourned, thank you for being here.
Thank you.